Okay, we call this the end of the order, beginning with the determination of the quorum. Mr. Clerk.
Uh, Mr. Chair, we do have a quorum, six here, one absent.
Please rise for pleasure.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as shown.
So moved.
Second.
A second. Before we actually vote on it, I would just point out, in case someone didn't see, uh, there were a couple of last-minute additions to the agenda today, and we'll talk about those, items ten D and E. Um, so Kathy, give out handouts for those. They are in the board book, but if you looked at it, if you haven't already, Bill, before today, you might not have seen those. So, um, we'll talk about those and, uh, when we get to them. Any further discussion on the agenda? Hearing none, all was in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you all. Um, recognition and awards, there are none this evening, brings us to community comment. Uh, this is a time for members of the community to step forward and address the board with any thoughts or concerns that they have. Uh, there is a three-minute limit per speaker and a fifteen-minute limit per topic. Uh, are there any members who wish to address the board at this time?
Hi. My name is Mary Lane. Oh my gosh. I don't think there's no kids here, because I'm isolated from everything. And this is what's really messing up here. I said, "Why I'm here." This is gonna be really quick. I'm gonna show you this. And what is this saying? First best verbal draft, two sixteen budget, city council. Okay. Your school board, I know that. And Todd, your superintendent. Okay, to make this short, um, I'm here just because I figured you might wonder why I'm here. I'm not sure I know why. That's why I said, "Why I'm here." I'm here just to smile and listen and wish you the best for the school year, because Andrea, I know that, hey, you got kids at home, you got daycare, and you have to not be President Jefferson anymore. My, my original place, nineteen seventy-two or eighty-seven, and then Dennis Dana, but Kudos and all him, almost everybody. I was with him the night before he died at the rest home, and this is what he said to me. I want you guys to know this. This could be, this could be public. Uh, he said, um, no, what he had said to me many times over those years, um, you know, you need to walk in my footsteps tonight. He was in a coma, so I was really quiet, and I just stood there, and I said, "Shh, I'll walk in your footsteps as best as I can, but your feet are way bigger than mine." And then I said, and I remember something else you said. You said, "Don't judge anybody unless you walk in their moccasins." Hey, I never have in my whole life, and I know that man never has. So, he's happy where he is, I'm happy where I am, and I just wanna thank you guys for being so passionate with kids, because, hey, we're connected, we're together right now, and this town, and this city council like I was gonna go to, and budget, you guys are sharp and smart. So, do what you need to do to make the whole community, especially kids, happy. Okay? Thanks.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Hearing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Um, the consent agenda is approved by one motion. Um, the consent agenda is not a debatable item, but items can be removed um, for further consideration by the board. Are there any items to be removed this evening? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Uh, Mr. Clerk, would you please do a roll call?
Yes, uh, Tom?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Yvette?
Aye.
Myself?
Aye.
Andrea?
Aye.
Chad?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, it passes six zero.
Thank you very much, Mr. Clerk. Uh, this brings us to item number six, curriculum. Uh, there's no report from the curriculum committee for this past month. We did not meet, um, which brings us to a technology update, and I know they've been pretty busy this summer, in particular recently, so Maria, I look forward to hearing them.
Good evening. Um, our big week was last week. Last week was our iPad distribution, and we distributed one thousand eight hundred and thirty-seven iPads over the past four days. So, um, overall, the process went really smooth. We had different checkout stations in our high school, and, um, by the time the student left, they had their iPad, it was configured, and they downloaded an app, and they had their Apple ID, so they were all set to go. They're all ready for the school year. So, it went really, really well. Um, I couldn't have done it without our volunteers. I had over fifty volunteers help over the four days. We had student volunteers and, and staff, and, and we even had our Apple rep come in from New York, so it was, it was really, really well, so I'm really happy with the way it turned out. Um, we have a makeup day on September second, from four to seven, for families that were not able to make the distribution last week, so it went really, really well. Um, we continue to move forward. Uh, we have, uh, fifteen of our staff that were, received over six hours of schoology training, so we're getting ready to move forward with our management system. The accounts are in there, they're ready to go, and we're doing a staff training on September second. It'll be a two-hour staff session for all our staff, and it'll be, um, a training and also a work session so they can get ready for the school year. Any questions?
Maria, I'll just add that I had a sixth-grade daughter and a seventh-grade daughter pick up their iPads, and my wife said it went smooth, so if she's impressed, you did a great job. So, hats off to you and your team, so.
Those are the reports I'm getting as well, so.
Yep.
Yeah, great job applying that and making it run well. Appreciate it.
We have a team effort, so.
And a positive comment about student assistance as well.
All right, thank you, Maria. Um, that brings us to item seven, policy. Uh, policy committee report, um, from the August eleventh meeting. Does anybody wanna comment on that?
Other than going through the policies that we have listed, um, it was, I don't wanna say not eventful, but we did get through some of these policies and talked about each of those things. Uh, trying to think of... Yeah, I got it. The delinquent meal account, I think we made one, well, we did, we only made one change of that, and that was to take off where they're actually paying it, so they can make the online pay. And Colleen made that change in there. You can read about that, too. So, just one small change in the, in the delinquent meal accounts. Special education records and retention is a statute now, and it parallels what the statute says. So, we, Rob did a good job of taking it apart and making it into terms that we can understand and that the staff can understand. Um, we need to adopt that as well, so. And then finally, the capital projects policy. We'd just like to talk to you briefly about that and see where the board wants to go with that policy. And that's all.
All right, so, um, moving along with the agenda then, the first two policies in front of us this evening then are, uh, policies five thirty-four and five thirty-six. Uh, policy five thirty-four is the delinquent meal account, um, and policy five thirty-six is the specialized records, uh, and, uh, records retention policy. Um, for those who are watching and perhaps don't see board meetings all the time, uh, the way policies work with the school board is that they come to the school board twice. The first is called the first reading, um, and the board only discusses policies at that time, um, and then they come back at the next board reading for a second reading, and at that time, the board can take action. So, these two policies are in front of us this evening, uh, as a first reading, so that we will not be acting on them, but are there questions on these two policies at this time? Please.
On the, uh, meal account policy, so we're sticking with, basically, we're going to see what next year brings, or because we're additional thirteen to fourteen thousand out of our general budget.
Right. We're going to try to, well, we are, we're not gonna try. We're going to send out more reminders to parents, and then also, if we need to, we may even call collections this time on parents that are not home. So, we're gonna be a little more aggressive, and then again, we'll reevaluate next year, but the policy, the base of the policy has not changed. That's correct.
Questions or comments on that? I didn't get a sense of a clear direction from the board when we discussed this at our work session, so, um, I think the only formal thing I took away from that meeting, but I'm happy to be corrected, was that, as a board, we all definitely wanted to look at it again in a year and try to get more information on, on why, uh, some accounts were not getting paid up. Um, so I know that was something we all wanted, and so we're working on that. In terms of changing the policy at this time, I didn't hear a clear direction, so I think that's where we're at at the time. Any other questions on these two policies? All right, we can expect them back in September then for a second reading. Uh, squeeze us policy nine oh eight. Uh, Todd, do you wanna tell us a little bit about why you wanted us to discuss this, this evening?
Yeah, it's, the policy, um, having a, a capital project policy is a good thing. Uh, I just wanted to make sure that the policy pertains to each of the different projects that we have going on. This, um, this project is really parallel to the fifteen million-dollar project that you guys put into play a few years ago when you passed that bond issue. Um, and we can certainly use parts of this policy for the project that we have going on right now, but if you look at even the time that it gets to the board level, it's five thousand dollars or ten percent, whichever's greater. Well, ten percent of one of our projects is three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, it's, it's a large number before it gets to the board, and we're certainly gonna be using our professional judgment if there is something that's controversial that we need to bring to you guys, and hopefully we won't have any of those issues. But, uh, the, the process that you could go by, too, instead of having policy, is just to give a directive to the superintendent with some parameters on there. So, I don't know if the board wants to revisit this policy. To me, this policy is, it's, it's good for the previous project, but it might need to be revisited for this current project, or if the board wants me to come up with some suggestions for some parameters for this particular project, moving forward, I can do it that way, too. And then you can just direct me, and we can move forward with it as well. I just wanted to get it more parallel to what we're working on right now. That's the only reason I wanted to discuss it and get some feedback.
Todd, this is a sum of all change orders for the, the new FEC and the DL. I, I, those are two separate, but it's a, it's a sum of all change orders, not just one change order being five thousand or ten percent, correct?
No, it's actually one change order. So, one changer would come, we would still update the board on all the change orders and, and give you that information.
Okay.
But according to this policy, the only time we would have to bring it to the board is if it's ten percent of whatever, whatever each individual project is. So, I don't remember the exact numbers. Whatever the FEC is, and, and that would be ten percent of that project, and whatever the DL is, and that's ten percent of that project.
So, in that case, let's just use a round, we're close, but it's not an accurate number. Let's say one of, one of those projects is a two and a half million dollar. This board would not, we would not, under this policy, have to find out about it until it hit two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
That's correct.
Okay, so I have a...
And I think this is why Todd is bringing it to us, right?
Yes.
Recognizing that that seems like a larger number before we wanna see.
And, and I think, and I know it's a change order, but, but when we had that work session meeting, I, I don't know if it was a work session meeting or whatever, at the district office with INS there, um, there's a couple different types of change orders. One being, um, kinda owner-driven, being school district-driven.
Yep.
Another one would be if there's a, a, you know, a engineering-driven type thing. Those are kinda two different types of change orders to me. One, one being like, hey, do we wanna upgrade this, or one, we don't have much choice but to upgrade it, you know what I mean, type of thing. So, I don't know where you put that in here, but just my thoughts.
I mean, I would agree. I think it needs to be higher than five thousand, but less than ten percent. So, I guess I would be comfortable with whatever Kevin and you've discussed with him, what a number would be, or someone that's more familiar with building projects.
Well, this was actually, um, for our, the five-year, small little projects. It wouldn't fit this, but again, there's another add-on there is that if a contractor misbid, that's, that's the problem that, oh, by the way, I didn't put this in the bid. Well, before it reaches us, of course, it goes through the architects, and then Kevin and Colleen, then our third line of defense is us.
Right.
So, maybe the number should change, but we should have this here just in case we have a contractor or a subcontractor.
Right.
Says, "Hey, you know, like concrete, oh, I forgot to put concrete in." Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, so I think historically, the, the numbers here made sense, 'cause they, you know, we had a lot of hundred and two-hundred thousand dollar projects, so changes on the order of ten to twenty thousand seemed reasonable to the board. Um, and, uh, that made sense in those smaller projects, and I think at that time, I, I was not, and I saw, I assume the board was not envisioning two and a half million, three and a half million dollar projects at that time, where it doesn't seem very appropriate. The wording doesn't match the size of the project decree. Um, uh, so it, it strikes me that, uh, we have two options, so it's just up to the board which of these two we wanna do. We can either rescind the policy and give directives to Todd, um, so that, that he can act according to our directives, or we can, uh, change the policy, uh, which is a couple-month process, because it has to go through the, to the policy committee, and then it has to come back to us for first and then second reading. Um, and a couple-month process is maybe not a big deal. In the meantime, I think we can, uh, give Todd a directive that we wanna see things. I think that's okay, too. Um, I'm hesitant to eliminate the policy, because I would like to have a policy like this in place, but I do agree that it doesn't read, um, it's not appropriate for the scale of these. So, I don't know if it can be written in a way that's appropriate for all projects ever or not. Um, maybe it's just choosing a number instead of trying to have two different values, just choosing a number, uh, whatever that number is, and changing it towards that. Um, so, so my sense would be, uh, this is just my personal feeling is, is I would like to see the policy here, 'cause I like that the district has a policy in place. It means it's always there. It means if we ever do another policy in the future, it's still here, um, and it doesn't get forgotten. Uh, so I like having a policy. I would rather change that policy, uh, than to see it, uh, see it go away and just, just do a directive. So, that's, that's my feeling on it. Um, and I, you know, I'm happy to give some guidance. I, I don't know if the number is ten, fifteen, twenty thousand dollars. I think any of those seem like reasonable numbers to me. I don't know how they seem to others.
So, if you're all okay with it, I'll go to work with Colleen and Kevin, and we'll come up with some parameters, basic parameters for you at the next meeting. And we can almost go parallel, don't you think? You can give me the directive at the next meeting, and then I can create policy.
I think that's right, yeah. And then the policy's always there, but we have a directive right away. I think that's, that's mine. Okay. Other thoughts on that?
Make sure that we're protected.
Yep.
You know, make sure that we're protected, that we do have the final word in case a change order does come through unreasonable, that it's not, you know, driven by engineering mistake, not mistake, but change, or, or we want something changed.
Yep.
Then that, that doesn't apply to this.
Right.
All right, thank you all for that discussion. Um, this brings us to item eight, finance. Starting with the finance committee report, you have minutes in front of you. Is there anything the treasurer or others on the finance committee would like to add before we move into items?
I think we had a very productive meeting, and the contracts you're about to see were approved by the finance committee.
Okay. Uh, so this brings us then, any questions for Steve, treasurer? That brings us to item eight B one, boundary changes consultant and guide K twelve proposals. So, we have a couple of proposals, uh, to approve, uh, related to, uh, looking at boundaries for our, for our schools. Looking for those in mind. So, I'm assuming there's contracts here to approve and not seeing them, though.
Yes, the first one.
Is this something that was handed out, or it's just, it's just down further?
Um, the guiding principles, what was the first?
I have the PowerPoint. Here we go. There's something.
Yeah, I'll see it in the first two.
Where's the finance piece of it?
Probably one of our earliest correspondence.
Was that earlier? I forgot.
It was in the finance committee.
Yeah, I have it in the finance.
I can, I have it here. I can send it.
Well, let's see. Did we, Colleen, did we have the finance committee online? There they are. So, why don't I, just, can I, can you just, it's really two simple pieces, real quickly. The finance piece is the, for the guide K twelve, the annual subscription fee is nine thousand three hundred and forty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents, and the first year service is an additional three thousand eight hundred dollars for a total of thirteen thousand one forty-eight. That's for the guide K twelve software. Okay. And then the, um, the, I guess the estimate that would be for the, um, consultant and the cost, remember what that total was right up the top?
Eight thousand.
Eight thousand dollars. Thank you. I knew it was right on twenty. So, eight thousand dollars for Kristen's consulting and hours in time for this. So, those are the two pieces missing about this. Thanks.
And I remember roughly those numbers from our discussion too, so I know you two. It's nice to have an attendee in this business. Okay. All right, so what are we looking for tonight? Are we looking for just to approve these two contracts, or do we have other discussions we're having?
Well, Kristen has another PowerPoint. Did you give that to Drew by chance?
And I, that's here.
Yep.
Got that.
So...
Yeah, I'm prepared to walk through a PowerPoint if you'd like one this evening. Um, if you'd like one for your community and the TV. If not, then I'm fine either way.
I think that would be great.
And the second thing was, remember, we wanted, uh, feedback for the document regarding the parameters that you guys would like to set. We came up with some suggestions for you to take a look at, and if you wanna change anything or add anything to that, then Kristen and I would be more than happy to make those changes for you.
Absolutely.
And then I'm assuming we also need to approve.
Yes, the dollars.
The expenditures.
Yep.
Excellent. Uh, why don't we start with the presentation? It'd be, I think, a great place to start.
Thank you. Uh, good evening. Chair, Angrec, um, directors, board of directors, superintendent, my name's Kristen Tolson. I've done some extensive work, um, in boundaries, um, most recently in the Wayzata Public Schools. Um, I have an interesting passion around boundaries and making systems in schools work well. So, I've prepared a PowerPoint that will take you through some of the steps that we would envision over the next few months together. Um, feel free to ask any questions. Um, you have seen some of this two weeks ago, but I thought it might be valuable just to quickly go through some of those first things. We'll see, we gotta go in the right, left direction here. Sorry. Okay. Some of the goals of the process that will, um, help us walk through this, um, is that we need your community to understand why it's important. Your, your principals, your building, your staff, they know very well where your buildings are working well and where your buildings are overly full, and so we need to help your community understand why change may be necessary. We need to make sure that we have some concrete data, um, and I'll have some slides coming up. Some of this work will be very valuable moving forward with or without, or even after the boundary shifts, um, take place. There'll be some good data that will be useful moving forward. Um, we need the, the people in the building to understand why, why changes need, 'cause there's gonna be some variation from buildings to buildings. You may have one elementary building that's feeling that everything's going quite well, and another building that's feeling like they're kinda pinching in corners. Um, we want things to be transparent and open, so that the public knows that this was a genuine process, that there wasn't any preconceived notions or decisions ahead of time on how things might lay out. And for the biggest thing is that we wanna have three elementary schools that are right-sized now and that have enough room for future changes, growth, and changes that might be coming in programming. Um, phase one, we're kind of in the middle of as we speak. We would talk about implementing guide K twelve. Guide K twelve is a very powerful geographical information system. It takes your student data and overlays it in mapping, so that we can move students from building to building and see what that does in long-term, um, what type of, what it does for future, what it does for the socioeconomic, what it does for making children, excuse me, travel times, those kinds of things. We can analyze quite quickly with guide K twelve. Um, the next piece, and I'll come back to this, we, we need, really need to establish target building capacities. That may be a new concept. Um, it'll take the work of both your teaching and learning staff, your buildings and ground staff, and your curriculum, your programming, looking at what curriculum moving forward might look like. Um, it's a way to compare your buildings apples to apples, and it isn't about utilization. So, just because one school, um, can have two art rooms and the other school only can have one, that doesn't mean that, that that's necessarily, that's utilization. That isn't what a necessary building capacity. If you only need one art room, you need one art room. There's some choices and some flexibility that can come, and that there may be ways that buildings need to use things differently, but we're gonna need to establish right away some building capacities, that you're comparing apples to apples as you look at. I also, um, know for most parents, class sizes are very important, so that'll be an important work that we'll do around class sizes, so that one school, because they're full, isn't having class sizes that are two and three or four students higher than one of your other buildings simply because the building isn't right-sized. Um, I'm gonna go back a little bit. Um, and then we're gonna need to spend some time just looking at is your, where you're growing, where you're not growing. Do children, um, come here after, if they have a private school, do they come at fifth grade or sixth grade? Do there, are there some typical entrance and exit points where students come and make a switch here? Or are there different kinds of enrollment data? Often, you can see, um, little blips after kindergarten for folks that choose maybe a private kindergarten experience, and then they come in first grade. You might also see kids that join you at the high school level. Maybe they come in kindergarten and they stay with you the whole, the whole time. So, that's some of the trends that we'll wanna look at. Okay. Um, once we get things underway, October and November, will be a lot of work with you folks, very strong guiding principles. What do we value the most as a community? Is it being in a neighborhood school? Is it having the schools the right size? Is it being poised for future growth? So, we'll spend some time together really nailing down. Um, all those things will sound really good. They'll all make good common sense, and when a push comes to shove, they may not all align all the time, so that's where those priorities will come in loud and clear. We'll spend some time with cabinet members, or perhaps the three elementary principals, looking at what those scenarios could look like, what it does for their growth in their buildings. It's very fun, it's odd to say. It's very fun in guide K twelve to move around and see what different things look like, what it does to your long-term growth, what it does to your short-term, and how many families it might affect. And those are all really important things that we would wanna monitor. We would also be developing a committee that is gonna spend some time working in guide K twelve with us, um, that would be representative of the schools and some community members. And then in November and December would be probably some pretty heavy committee work. We'd ask folks to come and learn about transportation, learn about your buildings, learn about what you expect in teaching and learning, look, learn about your class sizes, and then spend some time actually developing scenarios in guide K twelve. Practice ones, try different things to see what we get to. Um, I did this recently with another community group, and they really asked to come back the next day and spend more time just moving it around. Um, many of them had, um, aerial maps on their, on their smartphones, and they were looking at things, or they had regular city maps laid out next to guide K twelve, so they could, they could find the safe ways to school, or they would know that you can't have kids cross this highway. So, there'd be some natural boundaries they'd be looking at. Um, I would hope that as this committee works through, um, probably a half a dozen, maybe four to six meetings, that they would be prepared to provide to you a recommendation, what they would suggest along the way of how many students would be need to be moved, and which neighborhoods or areas seem most likely to, to, um, be moved to allow for future growth. And then lastly, um, once we make that recommendation to you, it's a little bit different at this point. We would have some more conversation back and forth, but we would want the, the community to have an opportunity to learn, learn a little bit about this and find out of the impacts and provide some feedback. There may be some unintended consequences that we didn't know about, or something that we, a blind spot that we might have missed. Hopefully not, but there'd be an opportunity for the community to provide feedback as well. So, just in summary, the process I would be looking forward to taking you through, we would have strong, clear guiding principles that would be set by you as the school board. We'd know what our needs and our goals are, so we'd be consistently moving forward. It's very hard to start a process and then change the game plan partway through, so we'd set that all up and... So, we'd set that all up in advance. We really want solid, consistent data in your buildings about your students, about what's going to what your growth is going to look like or what your program growth might look like. Um we want to have a committee that's representative of your your community. And then lastly, have a circle where they the whole community can provide feedback if they wish. Um am I okay for five minutes just to talk about the guiding principles or do you?
Please do.
Please do, okay. Some of these guiding principles will be ones that you might say, no, doesn't apply to us. Or, oh my goodness, that's really, really important to us. I'm just going to take a couple of minutes, they are in memo form. Um and as I stated earlier, all of these make good sense. If you were to ask somebody at your, you know, book club, they'd all say, well, we should save money. Ride time should be slow or be short. Everybody should go to their neighborhood school. Children shouldn't have to move during elementary school. Those are all very important. They may not all be able to happen all at the same time for every child. So, that's where your work of prioritizing this. Um some of the things that can be prioritized, a walk zone around the school. There's some benefits to that, it creates a neighborhood, it's healthy behavior, we value walking, it saves transportation costs. For everything that we say this is the walk zone around the school, there's going to be the family that's just outside that walk zone. So, there's there's kind of some push-pull on how do we define that. Um an entire neighborhood should go to the same school. Again, makes beautiful sense. Um it means the kids that play together are in neighborhood together, would go to school together. That one probably is an easier one, um but it does reduce some flexibility if there's some bigger subdivisions or some bigger areas that I might consider I'm in the same neighborhood with my friend and it there's some major thoroughfares. Um maximize the population in all buildings. Again, that's makes a lot of good sense. Um it would mean that we have all the buildings, if everyone has an art room, everyone has an art room or an orchestra room. It probably means that children will have to move. So, if you right now are putting, you know, going without music room, in order to make a music room in that building, that's thirty kids that have to go someplace else. So, and it will mean some movement. Some school districts have a, I want to say go back on, sorry, keeping families together. Um that's a there's a couple of these that kind of go together, but that's where if you decide to make the switch, this neighborhood's going to lose new elementary school. Families will have experienced the kindergarten or going to the new school. And maybe you leave the the fifth grader to grandfather. You could have families that have kids in in two different buildings. And for every family you fix it, it there's another family doesn't work quite so well for it. Some some districts choose to grandfather. So, you would you don't want to move somebody their fifth grade year. So, you let all the fifth graders stay put. So, then you can end up with families with two in two different buildings and your transportation costs might go up a bit. It's a little complicated for one year. Some districts have what I call legacy neighborhoods, but those are neighborhoods where they were kind of always, this is where the PTA might come from or where the volunteers come from. This is kind of an area that has always gone to blank school. Maybe that's not a a value that's of a high priority for the district. Uh there'll be there might be some real emotional feelings for some families. We've always donated or we've always volunteered at a certain school. Um transportation ride times and transportation costs will be something that we'll want to consider and decide how those prioritize. Um and then if there's any form of grandfathering of either fifth graders or sometimes um districts will want to, what I call grow through. We're not going to move anybody that's there now, but as the kindergartners come in, they they're assigned to the new school. That can work quite well, it limits transitions. But you would have a neighborhood that then is split by two different schools. So, those are some of the things, there may be more. Uh one of the other things I think that came up from the from the staff review was just wanting to make sure that that um major roads, highways, intersections are are um not considered within a walk zone and kind of create natural boundaries so that children have safe way to school, that we're not expecting kids to have to cross major anything major or unsafe in order to get to school. So, are there any questions I can answer, any thoughts off the bat?
I just have one.
Sure.
And it very well might fall under your guiding principles. But I don't see it jumping out on there and it's diversity. We have a lot of diversity in this town, in our schools, in our elementary schools. And that can be cultural and that can be economic. And um I think that has to be somewhere on here or fall in some category, I would guess, but whether you want to make that.
I think that's certainly a board decision if that's one of the guiding principles. We can certainly add that if that's what you wish.
I can't speak for anybody else, just just myself.
Yeah, well, I'll speak for me. That was I I was exactly the chat. And so, one sort of glaring thing missing to me was uh looking at the equitable, I mean, so there's this equitable use of facilities and it could potentially fall under that, but but I think it's important enough that needs to be explicit in our in our goals. That sort of equitable distribution of of Yale and free and reduced lunch populations. That those should be the things that you would be looking at and as much as we can to distribute those in a way that makes use of our facilities.
Okay. Those are valuable additions. I think I would be looking if we if this all goes through um this evening, I would be looking for us maybe at a work session to really hammer out the priority and kind of wordsmith it so it feels that it's genuinely yours to own. And then we could come back to the September or October board meeting and finalize those. And I think there's just a couple more slides we might go through and then conclude. Oh, thank you. Um this is one more discussion item we can have at the next work session if if you wish. Just to talk about what you would ask of the community, the committee. Um again, it can be they're very emotional, it can be very, we would want the committee to be very invested. And we need to kind of talk about what their boundaries and their parameters are and when their work is done and their recommendation comes to you and then when it becomes your work. So, we can review this together moving forward. Um this too can be wordsmithed or changed. If as a board you prefer not one scenario to come to you, but three or something along that line. We can we can wordsmith this to make sure that it it is what you want. If there's a different role you would like for the community committee, we can do that. And I'm open for any questions, comments?
Will there be a community forum? Is that what you're talking about, community feedback?
I think I think if that's what the group would want, I think um a real transparency, let the committee come. Whether it's whether it's something that people could write in, call in, or if we would want to have an an open house and a a short presentation. I think that that would be open to the board, but I'd be happy to facilitate that.
Now, could this also be at board meetings where it would be a agenda item, but then instead of having community comment beginning, it could be after this subject here? Because this is very important.
Absolutely. However, you would like to do that if you'd want to have a special session, that is absolutely fine. If you'd like to do it as a part of the board meeting and allow for public comment. And we can even judge that a little bit as we move forward to see how much feedback you're hearing.
Yeah, I think from from my standpoint in terms of choosing between having it at a board meeting versus a special meeting, it's not clear to me at the moment which of those might be better, but I I I lean towards the idea of a special meeting just for it with plenty of notice so that it gets uh, you know, it's highlighted, it's not part of a larger agenda. Uh so, there's there's no time constraints on it. But those would be my gut reactions, but we can we'll have time to make that decision.
And then after such a public forum, then we would could come back together and see if there is some revised proposal that comes back out of that. Or if what was heard was, you know, understandable and typical concerns, but nothing that we can really, you know, change. So, at that point, we would discuss whether there's another recommendation that could come out after that in feedback.
Is there a deadline, a date? We should have this done because of logistics?
Well, you guys gave me the guidelines of probably end of January, beginning of February last year. So, I'm assuming that that I think we're fine with those times, that seemed to be very reasonable.
I think with the holidays, the only thing I would want to do is try to have the committee work if possible in November. Because it's December would be hard, otherwise we would need to move the committee work to January and then provide a a recommendation to you in February. Either are fine, but I'm thinking in my head, I think we can do it in November if you wish.
Any other questions for Kristen? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And so, the item of business still left for for this item on the agenda is to approve the expenditures for this process. Uh if I wrote this down right, what we have is a thirteen thousand one hundred and forty-eight dollar expenditure for the guide guide K-12 program. Uh that was the total of a number of different aspects of that. And then an eight thousand dollar fee for our consulting, which is Kristen. Any discussion or in yeah, we'll start with any discussion on that item.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
You have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same as aye. Motion carries. And thank you again, Kristen, for all your hard work with that. And I look forward to working with you in the upcoming months. Uh okay, so this brings us to, let me get my agenda organized in front of me. Uh up next, the purchases of services from Owatonna, a visually impaired teacher. We'll have a number of these. I don't know if there's anything you want to add to this.
Please.
I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Up next, we have purchases of services from Owatonna, physically called other health disabilities teacher. Um I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this item? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same as aye. Motion carries. Uh brings us to item eight B four, Minnesota State Academies, the mainstream agreement.
A motion to approve?
What was that was a motion to approve? Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Uh we have a motion and a second to approve. Uh any further discussion on this item? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same as aye. Motion carries. Uh brings us to item eight B five, refuse and recycling contract. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh we have a motion and a second, any discussion on this item?
I guess I would just bring up, Richard, would you like to remember the number that was saved in this bid?
Todd, you want?
About twenty thousand dollars.
But recycling the organic waste. Last year was over a hundred thousand dollar contract.
For two years, yep. It was.
Yeah, two years and just by recycling organic waste, we can cut it by twenty thousand.
Yep.
So, thanks to the staff. It's been have had the work and effort and.
Using recycling from our kitchens essentially, is that majority of what this is? Excellent.
And recycling from the classrooms.
Oh, yeah, that too, yeah.
Some recycling from there. Excellent. Uh well, thank you to all the staff who who put the effort into to making that feasible, we appreciate it. We have a motion and a second to approve, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same as aye. Motion carries. Uh that brings us to the HVAC maintenance contract. Um I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve. Uh any further discussion on this item?
The only thing, uh this is for two years, is that accurate? And in the document, it shows pricing for three years. I believe this is two years.
It's two years.
Is it, yeah, two years.
Okay, yep. Do we need to specify that in our motion?
Yeah, probably should.
So, who made the motion?
I did, uh for two years.
Motion. He's also the politician, so we're not. We're going to gloss over that a little bit. Motion was for two years. I'm assuming that's what the second was for. Any further discussion on this item? Thank you for verifying that. Uh hearing no further discussion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same as aye. Motion carries. Uh this brings us to the chiller service. Any discussion on this item before we have a motion? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Is there a second? We have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same as aye. Motion carries. Uh this brings us to item eight B eight, the high school parking lot security. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second to approve, any further discussion?
Yes, we would just, uh when Professor Lyle presented this, he wanted to discuss future plans for this position and that he is going to be bringing more information about what other school districts do for this position that perhaps we might want to hire a district employee to do this position going forward to have a good quality of staff. Not that the staff performing it is a good quality, but we would be involved in the training and ongoing supervision of it, of the position as an employee. So, that's just something to think about for the next year.
Is this coming from a feeling on his part that he has no supervision of this this particular employee? Is that where this?
No, I think it's just a difficult position to fill with this, uh with the contract itself. It's a low rate of pay for an individual that you, you know, has some significant responsibility and accountability to our school district. He only had one bid this year for the contract. So, there isn't a lot of competition either for the contract.
Any further discussion on this item? Is this a one-year or a two-year contract? It's a one-year contract, I'm looking at that, right?
Yeah.
Okay. And if members of the committee, we have a motion and a second. We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same as aye. Motion carries. Uh this brings us to item eight B nine, the purchases of services, the Northfield Project table. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. Uh any further discussion on this item? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same as aye. Motion carries. Uh this brings us eight B ten, uh nursing supervision contract for the STEM charter school. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on this item?
Mr. Chair, can I just ask one question? And Colleen, you might have to answer it. When it says the indirect cost rate for the two thousand fifteen sixteen school year, seven percent, what what exactly is that number? Or what is it measuring?
Uh the indirect cost rate is calculated by the Minnesota Department of Education. So, with federal programs or contracts, you're allowed to charge an indirect cost rate to uh the program to recoup some federal dollars or to the person purchasing some of the services. And basically, what that covers is the costs of doing business. So, the business office, the fact that you have to either create an invoice or run a deposit or run a check or provide insurance or those kinds of things that are really indirect costs that you can't directly charge because they're not directly identifiable for that particular service. So, we're allowed to do that and every year that gets calculated based on our expenses.
So, we charge them the hourly rate that we pay and then we make it up seven percent?
Correct.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Any further discussion?
This is something we're able to do now that we've added a nursing staff, you're more comfortable.
That might be a Rob question?
Okay.
So, the short answer is yes. That exactly, that that's exactly. I think the board, when they approved the the second nurse coordinator, said that if we were able to hire a second nurse coordinator, we would entertain this contract with with the STEM school. Um we were able to hire someone and now that we're able to hire someone, we're going to hope to if with your approval, fulfill that contract.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any further discussion on this item? We do have a motion and a second? Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor, please signify. Hearing no further discussion, all those in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose same sign. Motion carries. Thank you very much. This brings us then to item eight C, budget, the enrollment report. So I was just looking at the enrollment report and seeing that the numbers are lower than our projected. I'm not sure what to make of that at this point, if you want to.
I probably should have added some notes to this or else not even sent it. August is very, very early to collect enrollment information and I really like to just get a benchmark. It doesn't have a lot of meaning yet because we don't have early childhood numbers in. So there, there's sixty-five, you can add to that bottom line number. And we also don't have area learning center students in yet because they're in the process of registering. So you can add about a hundred. So you can, if you add a hundred and fifty to that, even being a little conservative, you're at thirty-eight twenty. So we're very close to projections, so I apologize, I probably should have made some notes on that.
Should we eliminate August?
You know, sometimes I give it to you and sometimes I don't. I probably won't give it to you next year. Because it really doesn't have a lot of meaning for you. For me, it's something that I like to start watching in August and start watching the transfers out and the.
I'm okay seeing it as long as you.
Explain it. It's okay, don't have a heart attack yet. And even in September, when you see the September number, that's not going to be very good also because it's a September one count or September three, September second. So we've still got kids in the system that probably won't show up and we still have new kids coming in, so.
All right, thank you, Colleen. Kathy, the next item is item eight C three. The agenda says resolution sixteen oh one, the actual item in the board book says resolution sixteen oh three. I don't know if that was just a copy and paste error from previous.
Sixteen oh three is the correct.
Sixteen oh three is the correct.
Yes.
All right, thank you very much. So that's, we're on item eight C three, acceptance of some gifts and donations. We have one to consider this evening. That is the donation of the Steel Wasika Cooperative electric in the amount of fifteen hundred dollars for our Fairville Middle School Student Council. As always, we appreciate all contributions to our district, both large and small. And a note of thank you will be sent to this organization for helping us out this evening.
What does this donate it for?
For the student council?
The electric, yeah, I mean, what do they use?
Yeah, but I believe actually, and Mr. Myhawkes not here, and Todd, you might know the answer to this. But my daughter last year was sixth grade student council, so this is from last year. And shortly before school got out, Steel Wasika has their annual shareholder meeting in Owatonna at their facility. And I believe our student council kids will often go down there and work it. Bus tables set up, tear down type of thing. And they pay so much back to the student council per kid or per hour, however that works. But that's what it is kind of, they're, you know, I don't want to say they're hiring them, but that's kind of what they're doing type of thing, exchanging. So I don't know what the student council does with it, but that's, I believe that's where it comes from.
Thank you. I didn't know if they're actually donating like electric, some sort of service or something, but they're actually donating the cash.
It's the cash. Nothing says it in time. A lot of Christmas. I will entertain a motion to approve resolution sixteen oh three.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve six, resolution sixteen oh three, acceptance of gifts and donations. Any further discussion on this item? Hearing none, Mr. Clerk, would you please do a roll call?
Tom.
Aye.
Jason.
Aye.
Yvette.
Aye.
Myself, aye. Andrea.
Aye.
Chad.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, it passes six zero.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Clerk. This brings us to other committee reports. Insurance committee has no report this evening, wellness committee no report, community ed, Anne Marie.
Good evening. I would like to report two pieces of good news. It's all outdated because it's been in the paper already, but I wanted to make sure we recognized Jessica Lewis, coordinator of adult education. She was instrumental in helping Workforce Development, Inc., receive a Pathways to Prosperity or Adult Career Pathways grant in the amount of two hundred thousand. Adult Ed will receive forty-five thousand over two years to help deliver manufacturing prep classes. Those classes link to South Central College core manufacturing courses and curriculum. So they're seamless link into South Central College. We also will have adult education instructors support the students once they transition to South Central College in those manufacturing courses, which hopefully will lead them to a career in manufacturing, certificates in welding, CNC programming, or future careers in mechatronics, which is that engineering discipline. So that is a great piece of news for community ed for adult education. And the other piece of news is Amanda Cappies, who is the coordinator for Kids World. Her staff and several other people helped receive accreditation through the Minnesota Association of After-School Programs for the Kids World program. This accreditation is evidence of the quality of care that parents and children receive through Kids World. Staff had to go through and will continue to go through lots of training. We, we look at childcare throughout Minnesota and lots of, there are lots of providers, but many of those providers don't have trained staff. This is one of those programs where we can say, we have trained staff, we've received accreditation. We will continue to demand that high level of demonstration of child, high-quality care for our children and families. So just those two pieces of good news, that's all I have tonight.
Thank you very much, Anne Marie.
Yep.
Yes, please. Wonder if some future time, was it Net Parker, Dr. Parker could give a talk or what they're doing in South Central? Because I think they're adding back a lot of manufacturing and trade, is that true?
Yeah, they've, yeah, they've actually, you know, they've now reopened the carpentry program. And they, they, I think it was eleven million dollar bond issue that they put in, eleven or twelve million dollar renovating their facilities. And they've got this mechatronics lab that they've opened up that is a pathway to some of the engineering course. Yeah, they're doing a lot of great things. I bet she'd be more than, I'll put her on the spot if she's watching. I bet she'd be more than happy to come and talk to the board and have a.
Because one time we had cabinet making, carpentry, welding, machining. Is that coming back, a lot of it, or?
I think, yeah, that there's a lot of jobs out there and there's pretty high demand for those different things. Anne Marie's probably the best person for that because she used to work for T and she has a lot of that information.
Yeah, so South Central College is actually the fiscal host for a multimillion dollar grant to the Trade Adjustment Assistant College and Career Readiness Act. I know, it's called TACT for short. So anyway, the multimillion dollars, Dr. Parker really led the effort along with, I think there's eleven other Minskew campuses that have joined her in that effort. So advanced manufacturing is the, is the key, is the intent of that grant. And just as Mr. Olson said, there's programs coming back. Welding is certainly there, there's a welding lab that we've gotten to tour. So I would happily think that Dr. Parker would come and talk and also open it up to you guys to have, you go and visit and see what's happening over there. So, yeah.
Thank you, Anne Marie.
Yep.
All right, and that brings us to special services, Rob.
At the July board meeting, we talked about a lot of things. One of them was the special education child count. And I thought it might be a good idea just for me to give you a brief overview. So I created a one-page kind of snapshot at what our December first child count was for two thousand and fourteen. Overall, out of the students in, in Fairville, there are six hundred and forty-one students identified as having a disability. And that represents about twelve point three percent of the school population, actually the birth to twenty-one population in the public schools. In comparison to the state of Minnesota, Minnesota has a special education percentage of thirteen point six. So Fairville is, got about a percentage point less special education students than the state of Minnesota's average. And then I also broke it apart on the chart below by disability category and put the numbers there so you could see the numbers of kids out of those six hundred and forty-one students who are specific learning disabilities, speech and language impaired. Some things to note on this are typically in a district, speech and language, speech and language disability is typically the number one area of disability in Fairville at specific learning disabilities. I have, I don't have any explanation of why that would be, it's just an observation. Developmental delay, our kids in early childhood programs. And so when we look at the growth of our special education population, that's one area where we would look and say, right now there's ninety-one students, that seems, that seems a good hefty number. If that goes down, we might project our special education numbers to go down in the future. If that goes up, we might predict our special education numbers to go up in the future. And also, in general, across the state of Minnesota, autism numbers are on the rise. And in Fairville, we have sixty-five identified with autism spectrum disorders. I would expect that number to go up in the future, it's probably been going up. Over the past ten years, and we have reports that go back for child count for Fairville for over ten years, but I was looking to see if there was a change in the number of special education students across the district. And in two thousand and six, for example, we had two, six hundred and forty-one special education students, remarkably the same number that we had in two thousand and fourteen. So that's just a, any questions about that?
Rob, what would a specific learning, what falls under there?
Typically, those are kids who are identified with dyslexia, have reading disabilities or a math disability, dysgraphia might be a writing disability. Students who have academic disabilities that are below, significantly below the average student.
Any other questions for Rob? All right, thank you very much. All right, so this brings us to other matters. Starting with resolution sixteen oh two for the two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen membership in Minnesota State High School League. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, discussion on this item? All right, hearing none, Mr. Clerk, would you please do a roll call?
Oh, um, Tom.
Aye.
Jason.
Aye.
Yvette.
Aye.
Myself, aye. Andrea.
Aye.
Chad.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, passes six zero.
Thank you very much. This brings us to item ten B, approved, the athletics coaches handbook. I was wondering, Mr. Hubert, if you wouldn't mind coming and tell us a little bit about that? I know it's a first time in a while we've updated it, so if you wouldn't mind giving us a sense of what we're doing.
Well, basically, the coaches handbook has been around for many, many years. I'm not sure that it's something that has been placed in front of the board in the past, but because of the things that are in there, it's probably something that should be. And so I took the time this, this past June and July to update it, to add some things. For instance, social media policies, the reference to the board's hazing policy. Some of the things that the school board has passed because of budget cuts in, in previous years, really were written down nowhere. They were things that I made sure happened because I knew that that's what the board had passed previously. And so I made sure that those were included in here, some of them having to do, for instance, with, you know, for instance, one of the previous budget cut policies was that any, any non-conference event that a team chooses to go to that is beyond a seventy-five mile radius, the school district would cover four dollars, four hundred dollars worth of bus costs. Beyond that, it's going to be up to the team to cover it if they want to go someplace like Duluth or Grand Forks or something like that. So a number of things have been added like that. Some of the, some of the things that could be removed because they are outdated have been removed. But overall, just the entire handbook has been updated. So questions?
Ken, is there anything similar for other activities? I'm thinking of, well, robotics comes to mind, obviously. But I'm thinking of theater, you know, the other activities.
Not, not yet, but that's part of what I'm working on next, so. Yeah, there hasn't been anything, this was probably originally written back, possibly even just in the day when there were only guy sports. So it's been around for a while, but I couldn't tell you the last time it's been updated.
I don't know if this is the time to bring this up, but you weren't at the last board meeting when we had some discussion about your position and being a coach and just going over with that. So I certainly wouldn't see it reflected this year in the handbook, but maybe you're aware of that discussion that we had at the last board meeting going forward. That there are a couple of board members who would want us to maybe readdress that next spring.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thank you.
Ken, you were kind enough to present some information to us at a recent meeting regarding transformational coaching. Has that been incorporated into the coaches handbook in any regard, specific regard?
Not really, because that's part of the state, you know, the new state high school league policy. You know, what we're trying to do with coaches as far as coaches' education. You know, every coach now has to have an account through a coaches clipboard with the state high school, state high school league. Any coach who is coaching, anybody who is at the high school level has to go through and develop a purpose statement and do some, you know, just a few different modules as far as, as far as coaching, one part of which is to basically observe that, a similar video to what was presented to you.
Well, I want to thank you for the information. You shared a book with us and I'm finding it very interesting. And I think it has application throughout our activities program, but as well as our academic program in that students are more than numbers, more than a one-loss record, more than a point score, more than a test score. And I appreciate that, thank you.
I love it.
Mr. Hubert, on page twelve.
And I don't have it in front of me.
You don't have it in front of you, but you know, as soon as I say this, you're going to know what I'm getting at. It says, it shows the official logo.
Yep. That was, that was a logo that was approved by the school board back in the year two thousand.
I'm all for it.
Yep.
You know my stance. I'm also all for all of our coaches on the sidelines at school events or game events having the official logo and not the Atlanta Falcons logo.
Okay.
You know where I'm going.
I do know where you're going.
So with you being the activities director, it'd be really nice if you enforced that official logo so that we could all be one, wearing the official.
It is, it is one of those things that we've worked at. The challenge is, one of the challenges is the fact that, you know, there's nothing that will be purchased by the school that doesn't have that official logo. I mean, we're not, you know, I do not, don't allow that anywhere else. The challenge is materials that are purchased by associations. And, you know, that's, that's one of the things that's.
But you know as well as I do, they purchase new stuff year in and year out.
Yep.
And if they were told, they don't step on the field with the wrong logo, I'll guarantee you, week two, they'd have the right logo. It just, we are the Fairville Falcons and we are that logo and we should wear that logo. Every sport should wear that logo.
Okay.
Don't disagree.
We hope that will be intrinsically motivated so that all people who want to wear the Falcons logos.
I mean, whether you like it or not, that's our logo, so, you know. Get with it, get behind it.
Hopefully, there won't be a test. To be honest. I support your statement, Chad. I agree and I have to recognize it better.
Anything else?
Do you make resolution? It's in the, it's in the handbook.
It's in the policy.
It's in the handbook.
And that's, that's also one of the things that I did add to the handbook, just to make sure it was in there. Because again, it was passed by the board back in two thousand, but I don't know, unless somebody dug through board minutes, I don't think you, anybody would ever be able to find that.
Well, let's just keep in mind that there is free speech and there are some federal laws and there are some other things that we want, we don't want to get too carried away with it. We want to enforce it as much as we can, but there are other parameters out there that we want to make sure that we're aware of.
No, but my only issue with it is we have paid coaches that don't wear the school logo. logo, and, you know, that's all.
Nope, I support you.
Anything else?
Well, I just want to thank you for doing this, and this longer overdue, obviously, so, thank you for doing updates and taking initiative to get it done.
Any other questions for Ken?
You got to vote on it, I think.
What was that?
I think you have to vote on it, though.
I think we still have to vote on it, yeah. It's my memory, I don't remember if we have a motion to approve or not.
No.
I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve, any further discussion? Hearing on, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And so, this brings us to the approval of the Faribault Education Association tentative agreement. So, at our last work session, we met and discussed this in the closed meeting, so it comes before the board this evening to be acted upon, as I said at the, at the closed meeting, and I'll say here in the public meeting, because my wife is a teacher in the district, I will abstain, I need to abstain from voting on this item. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second to approve, any further discussion on this item? Please.
It looks like that we're getting ready, I think, the increase of eight point six percent, I believe, is that correct? Is that?
Colleen, if you want to.
About approximately eight point.
Eight point. Yep.
Okay.
Yep, eight point five nine two over two years.
Okay, and that's beyond our budget of six?
We had estimated six percent over two years, or three percent actually for next year's budget, we haven't done the sixteen, seventeen budget yet.
We always seem to budget three and three, right?
That's typically what we've done, correct.
Now, where does that extra money, that two point five nine, come from?
That will come from future money, we did not include the additional one percent that the legislature gave us on the formula for the budget for fifteen, sixteen, so that will be used to help cover the cost of this.
So, some of this comes out of our budget that possibly could hurt our students?
Possibly, we have to do an update on our budget, and we'll do that this fall, because we've got additional revenues that were not in the budget also, so, yeah, we'll have to take a look at the whole picture.
And then, how does this tie, if there is a tie-in to our recent test scores?
That would be a question for someone else.
I'll refer this to Todd, so, thank you, Colleen.
Yep.
So, a philosophical question, I might even defer it to Tom. How do, how does finance directly, how does finance directly impact test scores? I don't know if there's a correlation, I think that, the only measure I know is that high-quality teachers produce the best students. And so, what you want to derive from that, I guess, is more of an opinion for that, so, if I, I can guarantee you, if you get a high-quality teacher in the classroom, you're gonna, you can get high results from kids. I would also say that our emphasis for this school board has been to give kids a comprehensive education, a well-rounded education, and I would say, over the last couple of years, even considering last year when we talked about the test scores and putting emphasis on test scores, I don't think the board was really in favor of putting an emphasis on test scores. So, even test scores, test scores are important, we like to look at them, we like to look at our curriculum, we like to evaluate them, and we like to make progress for those. I just have, I haven't sent it to you, but I had a nice email from our middle school principals that showed over the last two years, our middle school, and I haven't analyzed the other ones, but our middle school actually has seen some gains in all areas over the last two years of test scores. But I don't contribute that to money, I contribute that to quality teachers in the classroom. So, it's a hard question to put a direct answer to, it's more a philosophical question than anything else, so, I apologize if I didn't answer your question.
No, I just, I like putting you on the spot here.
Yeah, that's okay.
Well, I think that the trend is showing that it shouldn't be linked to test scores, and that's why the legislature voted, is voting to decrease the number of tests that we're giving students, and we, you know, obviously, test scores are what's reflected in the press, but I think our goal is to have overall growth, we're seeing growth in many areas in our curriculum with students. And it's kind of arbitrary just to link it to a test score, there's a lot of factors that go into teacher normalization.
Yeah, I was waiting for Tom to change.
I know, I know, I am too.
I've spoken many times about my reluctance to give a lot of weight to standardized test scores as a measure of educational excellence. Have nothing new to add to that, I still remain convinced that performance over time, that putting high-quality teachers in the classroom by providing the support structure in terms of curriculum and facilities and resources are the absolute best way we have of ensuring success for our students. I think our students' performance in the real world, outside, after K-12, pre-K-12, is a, I don't, I haven't been able to garner any significant problems related to our program. So, I guess I personally don't worry about test scores, what I am worried about is performance over time and the continuing support that we as a community can give to our teachers in the valuable work that they're trying to do. If, I could go on, and I won't.
Alright, I do not leave, I've asked for a motion to approve, or did I?
Yes.
I have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion on this item?
As a board member involved in the negotiations process, I would like to compliment our administrative members, our staff, the Education Association members, I thought this year's process was particularly mutually supportive in trying to address issues and goals, I thought I was very comfortable with the process, and I thought it went well, as we probably will retain our ranking somewhere in the bottom half, bottom, or the middle or to the bottom half of the big nine, but those results aren't in yet. But it wasn't our goal to be the top in our conference or the bottom, but to maintain positive relationships with our teaching staff, and I think that the process that we went through this year was very conducive to that. So, I was pleased with the way it went, I'm satisfied with the result, and I hope that we will vote approval.
What's the average cost per FTE, or per teacher? Usually, I get an average.
You mean the average salary per teacher?
No, average increase.
Average, do you have those numbers straight, I think, was it in the other sheet?
Okay, there it is.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Oh, six thousand seven hundred, okay.
For two years.
Two years, yeah.
That covers everything.
Yeah, right, bottom line, yeah.
Any further questions? Alright, hearing none, Mr. Kirk, would you please do a roll call?
Tom.
Aye.
Jason.
Abstain.
Yvette.
Aye.
Myself, no. Andrea.
Aye.
Chad.
Aye.
It passes four one.
Alright, thank you very much, Mr. Kirk. So now, we come to a couple of items that were added just recently. Items ten D, consider approval to hire a full-time reading interventionist at Jefferson Elementary School. So, Todd, and whoever else you might want with you, you can walk us through that and how it came about very recently, and why it kind of came to the board at the last minute, and why we're looking for approval this evening.
Yeah, first of all, I apologize for getting this to you last minute, we had some circumstances that occurred last week that actually set us in this sort of direction, and I actually think it's a better solution than what we had previously, but that's my own opinion, you know. Tried to explain it, I might call Colleen Cardenute up here, or Jennifer Molitor up here to talk a little bit about it, but let me give you the first stab, and I'll see how far I get. The, you remember the ATSS, it's not really grant, but the ATSS application that was approved by the state, allowed us to hire additional staff for reading interventionists at the elementary school. And what happened is that a lot of these staff were younger than expected staff, or staff that weren't as high on the pay scale, and the budget then for that particular program, we underspent by about sixty-some thousand dollars. We, so we had some extra revenue, or not extra revenue, extra dollars left over as a result of not hiring the more experienced staff that we thought we may have. The other piece of it that occurred last week, we had anticipated, actually Jennifer Molitor had offered a position to a student from Mankato, an actual licensed teacher now from, that went through Mankato program that we use for our fellows, the fellow program and the TOSA program, that allows Vana to be half-time reading specialist, and then half-time help for Mankato, helping with observing teachers and other things, and doing some professional development. Well, the particular staff person decided not to come to Faribault to work last Wednesday, which meant that we had to, our first option would be to put Vana back into the classroom, and she does a great job, and we had no problem with that at all. But we also remember had the dollar amount piece that after Colleen and Nicole and other clean, both cleans looked at the budget, we were, we actually had about seventy thousand dollars total, with both the fellow not coming into the program, and then also the savings we had from the teachers from the ATSS grant. So, the idea came to keep Vana in the reading specialist or the interventionist position, and actually make her full-time instead of half-time, so we eliminate the agreement with Mankato, and make Vana a full-time reading specialist or reading interventionist, and then fill the classroom, and I don't, is it second grade or third grade?
First grade.
First grade, the first grade classroom with an elementary teacher, using that additional funding that we had set aside for the ATSS grant. So, it seemed to be a logical choice, the timing wasn't good because it just happened last week, so, I got a call on my way to Omaha from Colleen saying, can we do this and make this thing work, and actually, there's a bunch of them. And I said I'd call Jason and talk a little bit about it, and then we decided to put it as an addendum to see if the board would be okay putting it on the agenda, and then I got ahold of each one of you to see if, just to make sure you understood the information that was out there ahead of time. So, that is it in a nutshell, I guess, if you have other questions about that, that kind of covers it, and there was a summary sheet that we put on the board, book online, and I asked Kathy to make some copies, and we handed those out to you earlier with regard to that. But financially, bottom line is, financially, it works really well for us, we're still saving a couple of bucks, and we're also able to put a very good teacher in that reading specialist position at Jefferson. And even out the two, I think the other thing that works out pretty well is that we even out both Lincoln and Jefferson with reading interventionist, so it works out pretty well.
Todd, I just want to make sure I understand the numbers, so for twenty fifteen, sixteen, in this summary here, in the memo, right now, this is listing two interventionists, one academic and one behavioral interventionist. I want to make sure I understand, does this, this request this evening, does that bring them to two interventionists, or does it bring them up to three interventionists?
It brings them up to two reading interventionists, help me out Nicole, and one behavioral interventionist, right? For a total of three interventionists.
So, we would go from two to three interventionists at Jefferson.
Correct.
Okay.
So, Todd, when I look at this summary of the three schools, and I'm looking specifically at each school in line item number two for each school. Roosevelt, if I'm looking at this accurately, are they adding five FTEs when you add those two and a half interventionists, or is that just a total of two and a half interventionists?
That's a total.
A total of?
Yep, two and a half.
Okay, and then Jefferson's adding two, and then Lincoln's adding three, is that, am I looking at all that accurately?
We'll actually, well, two reading interventionists and one behavioral interventionist for a total of, you know what?
Jennifer.
And certainly, if you need help, you can call Colleen or Nicole too to help you out with the numbers, so, they'll be able to.
We have, well, currently have three interventionists total, so two of them will be reading interventionists, and one will be the behavior interventionist. And then, if you look, Roosevelt has two point five, and Lincoln has three point oh.
So, you're gonna have three also?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
She did it so much better than I.
So, they're pretty much equal throughout.
Pretty much.
Is there a greater need in Jefferson than other schools, or, I mean, is it equal?
Well, I don't know, it's, I guess, again, it's hard to understand that yet until you actually kind of get into the whole process, but we're pretty happy with what we have. Adding any kind of reading interventionist number one is a bonus for us, so I think this is perfect. Colleen, you want to, she's our academic scholar here.
Well, in some aspects, we do feel that Jefferson has a greater need based upon the diversity in free and reduced numbers, they're just slightly above the other two schools at this point in time, and so, we do feel that Jefferson definitely has a need. We have, we had planned all along on having Vana in this position with MSU because we really felt that MSU would come through with the fellow, so it was really kind of a shock to us on Wednesday when we found out that that would not happen. So, we already have our schedules planned and arrangements made to service our kids.
So, we don't, we're not, we're not gonna be taking one from Roosevelt to ship it over to Jefferson?
No.
Do you need it? I mean, to me, it's all equal, are they all equal?
Only if you, I mean, if you, if Vana stays in the current, or stays as an interventionist that will equal out to the Lincoln, to Lincoln, as far as the number of interventionists, that is, if we do approve this position. Otherwise, then they would be down to two interventionists, and Lincoln would have three. This is not to have the discussion about Roosevelt, because Roosevelt would definitely have a slightly less, however, you know, we do have a great need in Jefferson, so, I think it would be a wise decision to add this position or to continue with this position.
I'm not sure if Mr. Olson's asking this or not, but is this enough?
That's, that's what I'm trying to say, is that.
And, and, and the reason I say that, I've had several emails from staff members there, and I'm just point-blank asking, is this enough? If it's not enough, we should know that, you know, based on your thoughts as leadership of curriculum and building leadership. If it is enough, then it answers my question, but if it's not enough.
We do have a slight concern, we were talking about kindergarten, you want to give the numbers for kindergarten?
Well, as of today at three thirty, our kindergarten numbers were at eighty-six, and we capped at eighty-eight, so, we have people coming through our door every day. At three thirty, once Jan and Julie left, we had somebody come in with a second grader. So, our enrollment continues to go up every day, we have at least four. Looking at our K and one, our kindergarten is sixty-five percent non-English speaking families, and our first grade, I can give you the exact number here, our first grade is at approximately fifty-five percent non-English speaking families, and so, there is a concern there with looking at, you know, fifty-five out of eighty-eight students are English second learn, English second language learners.
So, when we look, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, it's okay.
When we look big picture here, and we have the newcomer program, are these, do these fifty-five kindergartners, do they go into that newcomer program?
No, our newcomer program is grades two through five.
Okay.
Now, that's not to say that. Now, that's not to say that they can't be in there for part of the time for a little bit of the programming. We have talked to kindergarten about if we get K one students, they can go in there for part of the time. But initially, that newcomer program is for grades two through five. So we're looking at support for that K and one for those high numbers.
So you're looking for support for it. Does this what we're talking about right now, support that? Or should there be something additional to support that?
Well, this is a good start towards that.
I, no, I get it's a good start, but we should be, we should be as a board hearing, hearing your concerns. And then we should be reacting based on can we afford it and based what's right for those kids. And I think we all want what's right for those kids and then we figure out a way, how do we afford that or, or not afford it. But if we don't hear those concerns from leadership, that's troubling. You, I really, we, we need to hear that, those types of things, I think. And we need to hear what's best for those kids.
Well, we were excited, to be honest with you, we were excited to get the ADSES grant and to add additional staff. And so we feel like we're moving in the right direction with that. Now, do we know before we start and before we actually see who's sitting in those seats, whether or not we need more support? You know, at this moment, we can't say, we definitely know that we need more support. Would I be surprised if we came back to the table and said, okay, under these circumstances, now we know who's in those seats? We might have to come back to the table and say, here's what we know. And if we're gonna, you know, progress the way in the direction we want, we might need additional. But at this point, it's hard to say because, you know, they're just numbers, you know, that we're looking at and, and our, it's, you know, sometimes we have a lot of kids that just walk in the door the first day of school. We have a lot of kids that walk in the door the first week of school. We don't know which door they're gonna walk in. Are they gonna be in the high school or are they gonna be, you know, in the elementary? So really, we kind of have to hold tight till we start.
But we already know fifty-five in the eighty-eight in kindergarten?
As long as they all show up.
As lo, okay, I'm sorry.
Well, and, and those are the numbers that we've seen. Once they get to meet the parents, they'll get a better idea too of English speaking and where they're at. As far as, as supports.
How quickly can we add paraprofessional support?
We can add it pretty, I mean, we can offer a substitute, a contract right away. If we, if we determine internally that we need to hire a sub and then hang on until we go to the next board meeting, we can have a sub go in there right away. So that, that's not really an issue. We've talked about that too, to see what happens if they are. I think one thing that you wanna keep in mind is that, remember, we're a K-12 system. I've had, there have been an influx of new families that have moved into the middle school and the high school too. So I think you, I, if you want us to look at it comprehensively, we have, first of all, I agree with Colleen, we have to see who shows up. I know that's frustrating for you, but we just don't know exactly where folks are gonna be landing. But there could be a huge need at the high school too. And you may wanna look at the entire picture before deciding how much money and where to spend those things on. And we'll be evaluating for it, but in this community, and Colleen has said this over and over again, it's pretty unique. Because you do have a very mobile community. And in fact, I just heard from Sam Oak that we do have an influx of folks coming from Texas this year. A very large influx of kids that are coming in from Texas. And I don't know how long they're gonna stay, but we're gonna have to take a look at that and see how, what sort of adjustment we're gonna be working with those kids too. So I know it's hard right now. Our feeling, we do the same thing with paraprofessionals too with regard to kids who are especially needs. If we have a couple of kids that move in from the district, then temporarily, we, we hire subs. And we hold that off until we get final approval from you guys.
So I have a couple of questions. Does Lincoln have four sections of kindergarten still? And they currently have sixty kinders enrolled, correct? That, that was the numbers I was given last week. And we're looking at eighty-six at Jefferson. But yet, we're still okay with the same support at Jefferson and Lincoln?
Well, do you know what the numbers are at Lincoln?
Okay, that was the numbers that I got from the district, district office last week when I asked for enrollment numbers for kinder. So I'm just looking, that's twenty-six kids already. That's a whole classroom of kids. Difference between Jefferson and Lincoln, but we're looking at the same support at both of those schools. I just, I, I'm having deja vu of last year.
Well, when we, you know, I mean, that's why we might be coming back to the table. I mean, and honestly, I mean, I know you're a little bit stressed in the elementary area. The, the true belief that, that we believe at this district is that we have to hit them when they're low. The best time to, to get the support and to add the support is down in our elementaries, down in the K one-two area. So we're fully aware of it, but we don't wanna come to the board and say, here's what we want and here's what we need and then not have the kids show up. So that's part of the problem. Once they show up, yeah, we, there is a strong possibility, especially this year, that we will be coming back to the table.
Can, can you shift these people around?
Well, I mean, I think this discussion is feeding into what we're trying to do next year.
Yes, in the ADSES grant, yes, you can. In the title grant, there's a formula that we have to follow based upon free and reduce. So the title staff is not easily shift, but the ADSES is a possibility if we find that we have that need.
Now, the students coming into the office in the elementaries, I don't know if you know this, but what school is getting actually more parents and kids showing up at their front doors? Is it more Roosevelt or is it Jefferson because of the rental units in that section of town?
Well, interesting a lot, enough, who's showing up currently is the, Maria left, are the people that want their iPads. So the middle and high schools, we had many students that were not registered that showed up to pick up their iPad. And of course, they could not get their iPad until they were fully registered and we got them in the system. So, this year, it's the high school and middle school. So hopefully, we'll have less kids just on their first day, looking at a brand-new schedule. So I, I, I would say that for this year, it's the middle and high school. In the elementary arena, it is really hard to say. Our secretaries just came back last week? Two weeks ago? We really can't predict where they're gonna come because last year, Lincoln had an influx of kids, you know, the first day of school, along with Jefferson. So, you know, am I guessing that we're going to have, we're going to have kids that are going to come that first week of school that have not registered? We, we're not sure which, where we're gonna get more of them. We just, we can't predict that. We try to get the word out that they need to register and come early, but it doesn't always happen.
It's safe to say that we're likely not going to respond by adding more interventionists beyond what's here? Just from the scope of the ability to be able to find interventionist at the last moment and that's, is that, is that safe to say?
Well, it's, it's really more than we've ever had before. So there, you know, there's, you know, this is the first year that we actually were able to add two interventionists to the building since I've been here. Our, it was under the negotiations, as long as the contract goes through. The other great thing that happened to us is that title will go full-time as long as the, the contract gets approved. And so it's additionally, it's more support than we've had in the past. So we're, we're hopeful.
And so then my next question is, is, so I see our response is, is going to be adding paraprofessional hours where they're, where they're needed. And I guess I just wanna vote, go back to my original question because it's not all that clear to me, how quickly that can be done? As in, it would be nice if that starts to happen on the first and second day of school and not a week and two weeks into school? If we feel like that's, that's a need. You know, if I'm looking at a kindergarten class, there's twenty-two kids in it and, and sixty percent EL students? Yeah, I, I see a need for more paraprofessional help in that, in that room. And I understand wanting to wait and see everything else in the district. I just can't imagine that's not how we're gonna respond to that. And I just wanna have a sense that we're not gonna respond to that a month after school starts or a couple of weeks after school starts. But we're getting what we're, need to do lined up ahead of time so that when school starts, you know, we're still a couple of weeks out. So I understand wanting to wait that, but, but can we have that in place when school starts or very shortly after, meaning a day or two after, not weeks after?
Right. Well, first of all, I wanna say thank you because it is exciting to know that there is support there for extra paraprofessional time and just the support for those children. That, that means a lot to all of us at Jefferson. And so it's exciting to hear that. We will be able to get that paraprofessional time quite quickly. We can do it through the subs and we can add more. We've got some pairs who only work maybe two hours a day. And we can offer them more hours through that. They have to go through a whole process and all of that, but we can do that through the subbing to get it in. So our kindergartners, you know, their first two days are split up half and half. And so by then, we'll get a good feel of the kids who are coming and the teachers will have met them. And we'll know by the end of that first week what our needs will be and be able to move on that very quickly. Within a day or two, I would, I would speculate that we could get that taken care of.
And if I understood correctly, we're close to our cap at Jefferson such that if more kinders are coming in at this point, we're sending them to a different school. Is that right?
I mean, let's be honest, if you wanna offer us, you know, a paraposition right now or a teaching position, we will take it. So I'm just gonna throw it on the table.
So when we talk about this, so should they find out they need it day two? Which is, what, September ninth? School starts on the eighth. What is the process that it goes through? Do, do you authorize them hiring a sub? They hire a sub, it comes back to us and it's temporarily a sub until we make that more of a permanent position?
Yep.
That's?
That's exactly how it works.
Okay.
Yep. And then that's part of my, my job is if there is a, a stopgap, whether it's a teacher or a parent. Of course, as you go a little bit higher, if you get to the principals and it gets a little bit more controversial, I'm not gonna hire AP for the high school unless I get your approval ahead of time. But if there's a parent, if there's a custodian need or anything like that, then you've given me that authority to go ahead and do that temporarily. And then it comes to the school board for final approval in the consent agenda.
Well, I would just say, you know, I think we just started this discussion about changing the school buildings. Large credit to our new school board members and the issues at Jefferson. So not that we haven't set our goals yet, but I think that this came up last year and people are very concerned about that location of resources and classrooms and teachers. And that's something we'll certainly look at going forward with changing the structure maybe of our school boundaries.
You know, I'll, I'll second that with, given the student support and also given your staff support. It's very important that your staff feels that the leadership and the board supports them and the needs that they may or may not have type of thing. I have three kids go there and so I'm well aware of the stuff that goes on and, and doesn't go on in the hallways and in the classrooms.
Well, from my understanding, there's a lot of new staff at Jefferson this year. So I think that that has to be taken into consideration as well. When you don't have the veteran staff there, that really changes things up and there needs to be a little bit more support if we wanna hold on to those good new teachers that could possibly be within our schools.
We have had several conversations about that already.
We have, we've had several conversations about increasing our mentoring program too for those new staff. We have, I don't know, how many, Nicole, do you recall offhand how many zero to, one to three-year teachers we have non-tenured right now? Hundred and thirty. That means a hundred and thirty, we have to, each principal has to observe them three times. So we have to do three hundred and ninety observations for those teachers. And we have, how mu, how much mentor time?
I want them to meet once a month.
They have the ability to meet once a month. They, they have to attend five, five or four out of the nine, nine optional meetings.
So that's been a big concern of ours going into this whole thing, the, the observations, how we're gonna get them done and then also the mentoring process too.
Are, are we allowed, just a general question, to move experienced teachers throughout the schools, elementary schools?
Help, Nicole.
In other words, if there's a one, a lot of veterans at one school, then the others are newbies. Can we spread them out or can't, can we do that?
Not really, no.
Okay, why not? Why?
Because the way the language reads in the contract is that if we need to move someone or do an administrative transfer, is what it's called, we have to do it based on seniority. So I mean, the lowest senior individual would be the one required to move.
That's why I voted no for contracts, so that we, we should get back to your authority where we can even this out. Get the experienced teachers with the, with the newbies. But with the contract, we can't do that.
Well, it's also about where a teacher wants to teach too, which is, so, you know, some teachers like teaching in some buildings, so then.
It's all students though. It's all students.
Well, they're effective teachers because they like the building they're teaching in and they're helpful there, so.
All right, any other questions? So we've been requested to approve a full-time reading interventionist at Jefferson. I don't, I don't believe we have a motion to that effect at this point. I'll move any other motion? A motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion on this item? I think from our conversation, you can guess how this vote is going to go and, and also probably take away from, from this conversation, the desire of the board to make sure that we feel like we're supporting our staff on day one, I think is probably the key. While recognizing that, that there is more support structure in the interventionist this year than we've had in the past, that's, that's a good thing as well. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those with a favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I pull the same sign. No she carries. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. And that brings us to consider approval for long-term facilities maintenance plan. Todd, do you wanna tell us a little bit about what this is or is it, Colleen wants?
I'm gonna reference her in about two seconds, so yeah, come on up. This is the plan. We are getting ready for the levy certification. And we just wanna make sure you're clear with the new facilities plan that was passed by the government, by the state, of what this entails and how that's gonna affect our levy. And Colleen created a spreadsheet for you. We're, we're getting into kind of a time crunch, so you're seeing some of these things come up. And we wanted to have you and give you a heads up prior to that. In fact, I think we even need approval for this plan for us to implement this thing on our, our levy. So it's pretty important piece of information.
Well, I'd like to take credit for the spreadsheets. I did not create them actually.
And you?
No, no. These are from the Department of Education. So with the new law for long-term facilities maintenance, they rolled in the old health and safety levy and the old deferred maintenance revenue into this new pot of revenue called long-term facilities maintenance. So they, they actually created these spreadsheets. We're required to complete the spreadsheets and submit that along with the statement of assurances. So you've got those three documents. And then our board minutes showing that you did approve all three of these documents. So I know that the first spreadsheet is three pages long and I'm not gonna take you through all those details because it really, it just gets to the bottom line. If you wanna flip to page four of that handout or it's the last page of the three, the first spreadsheet. Not sure how I can, got numbered from one to sixty-two. All right, so if we just go down to six, line sixty-two. Actually, back up to fifty-seven. Line fifty-seven, is everybody there? Okay. That is the new calculation then of this revenue. So in fiscal two thousand seventeen, we will be getting approximately eight hundred and twenty-one thousand dollars in long-term deferred maintenance revenue. Now, if we compare that to the old law, we probably would've gotten about three hundred thousand in health and safety revenue and about two hundred and seventy-five thousand in deferred maintenance revenue. So it is a bit more in that first year. And this is being phased in over three years and seventeen is the first year, so we're getting a little bit more in seventeen. It's phased in about another halfway in eighteen and then it's fully phased in in nineteen. So if you look at fiscal nineteen, our revenue then will be at one point six million, so substantially more than what we're getting now at about six hundred to seven hundred thousand. And the purpose of this revenue is to take care of those deferred maintenance items. It's not for new construction at all or any kind of new building project. It's really to take care of painting, carpet, lockers, tuck pointing, all those kinds of maintenance items that have to happen on our facilities. So we have a lot of that. So that's what this first spreadsheet does. It just identifies the revenue. And this is an equalized revenue, so that means that part of it will be state aid and part of it will be levy. So if we look at the bottom two lines, that's where it shows you the breakdown between, I'm sorry, sixty-two is the levy and then sixty is the aid that comes with it. So the aid part really doesn't kick in until it's fully phased in in nineteen. It'll be mostly levy. mostly levy for the first couple of years. So that's the revenue side. The next document is also created by the Department of Education, and we will be required to do this every year, and this shows ten years' worth of expenditures then for that long-term facilities maintenance. What they told us really is to focus on seventeen and eighteen, because obviously, we can't predict ten years out, that's pretty difficult. But what this document shows then are the first five or six lines are the health and safety items, where it says physical hazards, other hazardous materials, and down to the indoor air quality, so that's the total of the health and safety projects. And then at the bottom, it shows our deferred capital expenditures and maintenance projects. So to start with, Kevin has plugged in some numbers here to use that revenue, and these are projects that are all on the deferred maintenance list. So we have to have those two documents to them, and then the statement of assurances, basically that says we understand how the law is, uh, how the law reads as far as what we can and can't do with the money. Okay, any questions on that? No, it's a lot of numbers, but it's, it's more for their purposes to look at than ours. They did a lot of calculations and pulled harmless to make sure that under old law, that didn't generate more money than new law, because if it did, then you got to stay under the old law.
Colleen, sixty-two, where you talked about general fund levy?
Yes.
Levy in this case, is that local taxpayer levy?
Yes.
Is that state?
That's, that levy means that's what's going to show up on our levy certification, that will be local taxpayer.
Well, okay, so everybody in our school district, that's what?
Yes.
And, and, and just to be clear, the school district, that, that's coming from the state, right? I mean, the state is, 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 what, what I mean is, so the taxpayers aren't confused that we put some levy on them without them voting or something?
Correct, correct.
It's done through the legislature.
That's correct. Although you do have the option to under levy in this component if you want to. You always have the option to under levy in most components of the levy certification. Um, if you do it with a levy that has an aid component attached to it, you also lose, lose aid though, too. So certainly, this is wonderful news for school districts to catch up on deferred maintenance items and keep buildings in good repair and grounds in good repair, but, you know, it comes with, the flip side of that is it is a tax increase for taxpayers, but we do get state aid along with it, so it isn't totally dependent on taxpayers.
Any more questions on this?
Just one more comment, if you approve this tonight, then you still have final approval of the levy certification come December. So we'll see some, we'll see the impact of what it does to taxes in September when we go through the preliminary levy certification. And then you'll have an op- opportunity to think about that for a couple of months and then make a decision in December.
This really helps even out some of the, the incredible disparity between districts
and the state who have the ability under the law to do this anyway, and, uh, there are many of us who don't. There is a small number of districts that have the ability to levy this already without taxpayer approval, and we do not.
Will it be truly equalized once the three-year phase in is done?
Yes.
And just a, again, thanks to, to Mr. Olson for bringing this to the board's attention last year, as a resolution for MSBA, that's one of the pieces that they did approve through the MSBA.
It also came from the recommendation of, uh, a committee that...
The facilities, facilities working group, yeah.
Kevin was on as well, so.
Yep.
Many people have been working for that for many years.
Yes.
Thankfully, finally went through. Um, I don't believe I have a motion to approve, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
A motion, a second to approve the long-term ma- facilities maintenance revenue. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same sign. Motion carries. Uh, and this brings us then to other items of information, starting with our student representatives. Did you not know about this?
Oh, I forgot to tell them about this.
The look on your face said, we didn't know, we were talking right now.
So just a note, just so I have them here right now, so before the next, uh, board meeting or work session, just email me ahead of time and then I'll give you some information and then, or Kathy can give you some information. But for the, and you guys can give them some feedback here, but what we'd like to hear from you is what's happening in the school, what are some of the events that are coming up? Um, we'd like to hear about food service, how that, how that is going, uh, what else do we like to hear about from, from the students?
The parties are heavy.
Yeah. No, no.
School-sponsored.
Yeah. Athletic events, contests, uh, the plays, when those dates are, prom, anything you can think of coming in with the next month or so before your next report.
Now, if this is your first time on TV, would you mind taking a couple of minutes? Mi- minutes is a long time, a few seconds to introduce yourselves to all those who be tens and tens of people who watch, uh, school board meetings.
You wanna go?
Here we go.
Go ahead, Hannah.
Okay, I'm Hannah Boltman, um, I'm gonna be senior this year, I'm the senior class president, um, I'm swimming, I'm in golf. Um, my parents are Nancy and Jim Boltman. And, yeah.
That was perfect.
Go ahead, Jenna.
I'm Jenna Wetzel, and I'm gonna be the student council president this year at the high school, I'm also a senior. I'm involved in volleyball, basketball, and track, and link crew, and my parents are Todd and Kami Wetzel.
Also, just so you know, the, the school board members, and I'll tell you this, they like to hear from you about different things that are on the agenda, so don't be afraid to chime in sometimes, too. Okay?
Well, thank you for giving the time to be here this evening. Uh, it's greatly appreciated by those of us on the board, and thank you for taking the time, I know you guys are very busy. Your schedules are like my daughters, I'm sure they're much worse actions, so, I thank you both for being here this evening. Uh, and that brings us then to items of information from school board members.
Well, I'd like to, to mention one thing, I've had a, the proverbial battery die, so I can't be more specific. Uh, I noticed in, in our information here, there's some retirements that were announced in July. And one name particularly, I'd like to thank all the employees for their service. Uh, one name is of personal note to me, um, is Cindy Dell from the, uh, middle school, who I had the pleasure of working with, um, about eight years ago. And, uh, she's an incredible person, did an incredible job, and, um, wish her well in retirement, um, but she was...
Any other items from school board members? Hearing none, Mr. Superintendent?
Uh, yeah, we're very busy getting ready for school. Um, a couple of things that have happened in the past, thank you for a couple of you who came to the groundbreaking ceremony, so that was fun. We had our groundbreaking for the district office and the Fairville Education Center a couple of weeks ago. I was involved, uh, in the Chamber golf outing, I thought for sure we would've won, but I found out that we still lost by ten strokes. I had, uh, Margaret Gare and, and, um, Bill Johnson and Garrett Reagan and I had a foursome that went and played, so that, we had a good time. It was a very good turnout, and they did a great job, Chamber raised a lot of money that day. They took some of mine, too. Um, busy getting everything ready for the new school year, um, all of our staff, our cabinet at that level has been incredibly busy over the last couple of weeks. Uh, we had the iPad rollout, as you know, last week. I showed up a couple of times, messed things up a little bit, they told me to go away. Um, but no, everything went very, very well. And, uh, we are extremely busy and, and we are, we're getting pretty set for that first day. In fact, we would like to invite you as board members to the first day, particularly with our speaker. Uh, we have Carl Hooker coming to visit us, he's a national renown, renowned speaker, and he, he does a great job with technology and how that incorporates into classrooms. And I would really hope that you guys would come, just check the schedule, I'm not gonna tell you what time it is, it's on the website. And, other than that, that is about it.
All right, thank you, Todd. Uh, and that brings us to some dates to remember. On August thirty-first, at seven fifty AM, will be the all-staff back-to-school workshop. Um, on September seventh is Labor Day, uh, and September eighth then is our first day of school. September fourteenth, at seven thirty AM, is the finance meeting at the district office board conference room. Uh, September fourteenth, at three thirty PM, is the curriculum advisory committee in the district office conference room. Uh, September fourteenth, at five thirty PM, is our, uh, board work session at the district office. And September twenty-first, at five thirty PM, we'll be right back here in City College Council Chancos for the next regular board meeting. Uh, with that, I welcome to adjourn. So moved, is there a second?
Second.